Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Welcome to the December meeting of the Representative Town Meeting, which also happens to be the final meeting of the current term 2016-2017. As all members, my name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our October 23 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes? That's Susan Fahy. I know you spoke to me and I forgot what it was. Say that. Oh, okay. All right. So Lisa Stewart was sworn in? Okay. So we are changing Mita Vias, apparently was not sworn in. It was Lisa Stewart. We will make that change. Thank you. Are there any other proposed changes to the draft minutes of the October 23 meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I rise tonight to pay tribute to one of our longstanding public servants, Nancy Margaret Kaplan of Old Greenwich, a longtime civic leader and chairwoman of the Greenwich Board of Parks and Recreation, passed away Saturday, October 28th, at the age of 60. She had been battling cancer for over two and a half years. She chose to keep her illness private, preferring not to worry friends or have people view her differently. Despite her public role as Chair of the Board of Parks and Rec, Nancy worked more behind the scenes, allowing those around her to receive recognition. She was a leader in the fight for a town dog park and reestablished the Friends of Binny Park, a nonprofit created to supplement town funding to enhance and beautify the landscape. She was putting together Binny Baskets, a fundraiser she created days before her passing. As a member and president of the Friends of Greenwich Point, Nancy led initiatives to pay for improvements, including Adirondack-style chairs on the bluff, the Barefoot on the Beach Dinner fundraiser, images of Greenwich Point abound, collection of artwork from local artists depicting Greenwich Point in the annual Greenwich Point Holiday ornaments. Concerned by the rise of non-native plant species at the point, Nancy researched ways such as bringing in goats to remove invasives and restore the natural beauty. She also organized the first dune raising at Greenwich Point, spearheading the restoration of the entrance dunes washed away by superstorm Sandy and the planting of over 20,000 plugs of beach grass. In addition to her town service, she was very active with the Girl Scouts as well as the Junior League of Greenwich. She leaves behind her husband, Jack, and daughter, Jennifer. And I'd ask that the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting observe a moment of silence in the memory of Nancy Margaret Kaplan and have a suitable copy of this evening's minutes sent to her husband and daughter.
I'm sure many, many of the people here tonight have been touched by the work of Nancy Kaplan. I know my daughter was in the Girl Scout troop that she was a leader of and I recall fondly being sent on a scavenger hunt around Old Greenwich by Nancy. So would the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Nancy Kaplan? Thank you. Was there anyone else who had asked to address the meeting tonight? Any of our chairs? All right. I informed our District and Committee Chairs that based upon the reports received, I will recommend the following organization of our call tonight and I will make one minor change to that. I will designate pursuant to our rules Items 10 and 12 for our consent calendar, which means if they remain on that calendar, we will not hear committee reports or have discussion on those items. I will recommend that we combine for voting purposes Items 1 through 4, which includes the Community Development Block Grant items, which we will need to have a public hearing on. Item 8, 11, 13, and 21. So those will be combined in one group. And then the minor change from what I passed around, Items 14 to 20 are the proposed charter amendment changes, which require further work. And the recommendation will be to combine those items, 14 to 20, separately so that they can be referred back to a special committee of two to put them in final shape and bring them back to us in January. Which would then leave us to consider separately Items 5 through 7, the three leases, Item 9, 22, and 23. So at this point, pursuant to our rules, I will designate the following two items for our consent calendar. The first is Item 10. That is a resolution to appoint Peter Finkbiner to be a regular member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring October 31, 2021. That is the same as it appears in the call. And Item 12 is a resolution to appoint John Stancunis to be a regular member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring October 31, 2021. Is there any objection to the designation of those two items for our consent calendar? Hearing none. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar Items 10 and 12, and proceed to poll your delegation? We will now consider combining two separate groups of items, which requires a motion to suspend the rules. And so the proposal is first to combine Items 1 through 4, 8, 11, 13, and 21 for voting purposes. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine for voting purposes Items 1 through 4, 8, 11, 13, and 21. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining those items, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. While we're at it, let's also consider combining Items 14 to 20 for voting purposes. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for that purpose? All right. All those in favor of combining Items 14 to 20 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. So we will first take up the first group of combined items. So Item 1 is first up before us. This was postponed from our October meeting, so it is currently before us. This is a resolution to appoint Kirk Schubert to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2018. That is now currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered that item? John Eddy with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. The Appointments Committee met with Kirk Schubert on the 28th of November. Mr. Schubert has been nominated by the Board of Selectmen to serve the remaining six months of a three-year term on the Board of Parks and Recreation left by the departure of Christian Talheim. Mr. Schubert is a longtime Greenwich resident with five sons who served on the Board of the Old Greenwich Community Center since 1998. He has coached and managed 40-plus baseball and soccer teams. He's a member of the PTA Board at the Old Greenwich School or has been at the Old Greenwich School and the Brunswick School numerous times. And when asked about the advisory role of the Board of Parks and Recreation and the broad range of services and land uses managed by the Board, Mr. Schubert expressed a willingness and an ability to investigate and support the entire range of services and not be limited to his primary concern, which is the condition and availability of athletic fields. The Appointments Committee voted 11-0-0 with District 3 absent to approve his appointment.
Thank you. Andy Chapin, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
The Parks and Rec Committee met with Mr. Schubert in October. We felt he was well-qualified. You know, we agree with everything Mr. Eddy said. Our only -- first of all, we voted for him 12-0-0. Our only concern was that it seemed to our committee that the Parks and Rec Board is starting to become more heavily weighted with active sports people. With the passing of Nancy Kaplan, it's all men. And about two-thirds of those men live in Old Greenwich. And so we were asking that snack and appointments look at broadening the diversity a little on the committee in the future. Again, the vote was 12-0-0 for Mr. Schubert.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Item 3 now comes before us. Tyler Fairbairn, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. Thank you very much for having our Community Development Items on the call, 3 and 4 this evening. The Item Number 3, to consider an act upon the following resolution requested by the Director of Community Development and approved by the First Selectman in the Board of Estimate and Taxation, is as presented in the call and no changes have been made.
Thank you. And while you're there, you want to present Item 4 as well?
Certainly. Item Number 4 on the call, to consider an act upon the following resolution requested by the Director of Community Development and approved by the First Selectman in the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Also unchanged as is presented in the call.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of Items 3 and 4? Resolutions on Items 3 and 4 have been moved and seconded. And I understand we need a public hearing? Is that correct, Mr. Fairbairn? All right. So at this point, I will open a public hearing on Items 3 and 4. We'll leave that open until we have finished the combined items. All right. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee with that report.
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met last Tuesday with Tyler Fairbairn, the Director of Community Development, to discuss the proposed annual Community Development Block Grant budget for year 2018. In the interest of full disclosure, I am the current Chair of the Advisory Committee. And since Mr. Fairbairn was not yet hired by the town when the advisory group met and made these proposed recommendations, I provided the summary to the Health and Human Services Committee along with the other Health and Human Services members who are also members of the advisory group. That would be Sam Tam and Alberto Ferrer. Patty Roberts, who is also a member, was not present at our meeting, but she does serve on the Block Grant Advisory Group with us. The CDBG program is a federally funded program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is an item that comes before the BET and the RTM each year. The budget needs to be reviewed and approved by both parties before the final application can be submitted and acted upon by the First Selectman on behalf of the Town of Greenwich to HUD. That last part is essentially Item Number 4 on this evening's call. You should have all received a draft copy of the block grant plan in November. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee is the group responsible for reviewing funding applications and making suggested recommendations regarding the allocation of funds. The Advisory Committee is comprised of 28 representatives from the RTM, BET, and Greenwich Housing Authority, Department of Social Services, as well as other members of the community, actually Department of Human Services, I apologize. It's anticipated that the town will receive approximately $715,000 in fiscal year 2018 from HUD. Per HUD guidelines and regulations, 20% of the total budgeted amount, or $143,000, is dedicated to block grant administrative expenses. 15% can be allocated to public service programs, or about $107,000, while the remaining 65% is dedicated to capital improvements such as property rehabilitations and acquisitions. That's about $464,000. We also anticipate $37,000 in reprogram funds, that's excess or unallocated funds, and approximately $15,000 in program income, for a grand total of about $768,000. This year, the Advisory Committee recommended funding to all of the public service programs that applied. 16 organizations applied for funding and the group recommended grants of between $5,000 to $10,000 for each of them. In considering public service program needs, the committee thought that those programs that provided the most critical services, such as mental health services to children, emergency food to local families, and domestic violence support, warranted the biggest allocations of $10,000. The committee felt strongly that all of the public service applicants provided valuable services to Greenwich's most needy. And for that reason, it chose to allocate a minimum of $5,000 to the remaining 12 applicants. And as a point of information, $5,000 is the minimum amount that you can be given for a grant. The committee also deliberated extensively over the capital improvement applications. Capital improvement applications are the harder of the two funding categories to work with because the requests are significantly larger than the total allocation amount. For example, this year, the advisory group considered capital requests totaling over $1 million. And the total amount anticipated for HUD for capital activities is $464,000. Unfortunately, this large discrepancy meant that the committee was recommending -- was unable to recommend funding for every applicant. We recommended full funding for six capital projects and recommended no funding for three projects. Given the very limited resources, one of the critical factors the committee used for funding requests was how many Greenwich residents are being served by Program X? In the case of Mutual Housing Association of Southwestern Connecticut, which submitted a $500,000 request, and Domus Kidge, which submitted a $51,000 request, neither of those agencies are currently working with Greenwich residents. The Housing Authority of Greenwich submitted a duplicate request. It was for McKinney Terrace painting and stair replacement. That was not funded because it was actually funded with fiscal year 17 funds. The requests are the -- the applicants found out very, very late this year that they would be getting money. It was as we were doing the applications for 18, they found out about 17. So that was a duplicate. Given the very tenuous circumstances that block grant finds itself in, the federal administration is thinking about eliminating it, the committee felt it would be wise to maintain a contingency fund of $246,000. Contingency funds can be used for capital projects proposed in fiscal year 19 that could be started in fiscal year 18 and/or for new application RFP process that can be started in 2018. Can only be used for capital. Basically, the committee wanted to ensure that if Greenwich received less money than anticipated, we had funds set aside to provide funding for the activities and projects that they elected to fund. And lastly, because this is a federally funded program, funds cannot be released until the federal budget passes. Typically, that means that the 2018 block grants will be available in late May of 2018 for the grant recipients. It's on the federal calendar budget. Our vote on Items 3 and 4 were 11-0-0 with District 1 absent. And finally, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of all the members of this advisory group, the majority of whom are RTM members, especially Bill Collins, who's the outgoing Vice Chair from District 11. Just as the RTM widens down in May, this group kicks into full gear. We conduct site visits and prepare reports on all the applicants. And some years deliberate on issues through August. And as Chair of that committee, I just appreciate all the effort that everyone has put forth to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. We took this item up last Monday with Mr. Fairbain and discussed it in much less detail than you just heard from the previous speaker. This is a routine matter, so we combined Items 3 and 4. We discussed most of the issues you just heard and we voted 8-0-0 in favor of this item.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Vice Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Fellow members of the RTM, guests. We met last Monday and again were assisted by Mr. Fairbairn. Again, we also spent less time on it than some of the -- one of the other committees. One point that was -- we did advise was that this is basically the same resolution that we've been adopting for the last several years, only the grant recipients' dates and amounts have been changed. Our vote on legal order was 10-0-0 with Districts 3 and 9 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Items 3 and 4? All right. Let's just momentarily go back and pick up Item 2, which I skipped. This also was postponed from our October meeting. This is a resolution to appoint Cynthia Smith to be a member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2019. That is currently before us. May we have the reports on that item? Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee interviewed Cynthia Smith at our meeting on October 16th. Cynthia Smith is an architect by training. She noted she had worked for the National Register of Historic Places in North Carolina on projects from concept through construction. Her professional work also included the design and construction of additions to very old houses, including in Greenwich, which she acknowledged is a very challenging process. When asked about her efforts to preserve older houses in Greenwich rather than tearing them down, Ms. Smith noted that it would be helpful to have greater leniency in our building codes. So we had a discussion about that. And there are initiatives, by the way, to provide additional incentives. So our vote on Ms. Smith was 11-0-0. District 11 was absent.
Thank you. John Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
The Appointments Committee voted 11-0-1 to recommend Ms. Smith's appointment with District 3 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Item 8 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Wayne Fox, our Town Attorney.
Well, good evening. Resolve that the sum of $500,000 be in the same as hereby appropriated be added to account number A140-51400, professional and other special services attorneys.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 8 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of our committees? Kip Bergweger with the Legislative and Rules Report.
Again, we met last Monday evening and Mr. Fox assisted us on this item. He explained that two cases had incurred unexpected expenses. One involved a man working on private property who was severely injured by a tree that was falling from town property. To date, this case has involved 26 depositions, 25 expert reports, and over 125 court filings. Medical bills are approximately $800,000. The town has a risk fund, which is set aside annually for settlements, and the amount from last year was $1 million. The amount incurred to date in this case is $268,000. The second case is the effort by EverSource to run power lines through Bruce Park. In opposing this proposal, we -- the town was required to retain specialists and experts. And after completing the hearing on the matter, the Siding Council has reopened the case. The cost in this matter is approximately $250,000. Mr. Fox believes the effort to resist EverSource's plan is well worth the cost. The appropriation of $500,000 will help cover these unexpected expenses. The vote on the merits was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Michael Warner with the Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee took this matter up last Wednesday night. We had Attorney Fox with us. And as you just heard, there are two cases that are believed to be worth the expense of a fight. And one is EverSource, which is ongoing and will have, if successful, have great benefit to the town. The other one is the continuing case of a personal injury matter, which there will be some insurance proceeds, but we're required to contest and we will contest. And it was the opinion of your Finance Committee that we should contest and spend the dollars we need to take on this matter. And the vote was 8-0-0 in favor of this expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 8. Item 11 now comes before us. John Eddy, do you have that resolution?
Be resolved that the following named person, nominated by the Appointments Committee of the RTM, be appointed alternate member A2 of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring October 31, 2021. So Allison Walsh.
Or that being offered on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second and is currently before us. Mr. Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to give a little background on the Flood and Erosion Control Board. If you're tired of hearing about the Flood and Erosion Control Board, for me, it means that I'm doing my job. So thank you for listening. Unlike the majority of the other boards in town, which on which those are serving are nominated by the Board of Selectmen and then appointed by the RTM, the members of Flood and Erosion Control Board are both appointed and nominated by the RTM. Following is a summary of the authority that is assigned to the Flood and Erosion Control Board by the town charter. To plan, construct, maintain, supervise, and manage a flood and erosion control system; to purchase or condemn property which it determines is necessary for use in connection with that system; and to negotiate, cooperate, and enter into agreements with the United States, the United States and the State of Connecticut, or the State of Connecticut in order to satisfy the conditions imposed by the United States or the State of Connecticut in authorizing any system for the improvement of navigation of any harbor or river or for the protection of property against the damage by flood or by erosion. Another thing that makes the Flood and Erosion Control Board unique is that it has no self-representative standing in the budgeting process. It does not directly receive the funds associated with exercising its authorities and implementing its priorities. So it's got responsibilities and it has authorities, but it doesn't really have the resources to meet those. It's dependent upon, unlike other agencies in town, which often have a department underneath them, the effectively the Flood and Erosion Control Board cooperates with the Department of Public Works. So it's a little bit of a different animal and it's important for us to understand that now because when the time comes down the road, when there's flooding and the Flood and Erosion Control Board comes before the town and people are angry, they need to understand that their situation is unique. So it's important that we, as the nominating body, understand that. With respect to Ms. Walsh, the Appointments Committee met with Ms. Walsh on October 10th. She is a candidate for nomination to serve a four-year term as an alternate member on the Board to succeed Mark Weller, who resigned in March. This committee voted to reappoint her as an alternate member R3 for a term beginning immediately and then ending again on October 31, 2021 with the changes to the term expiration dates that this body approved. At the request of the Chair of the Flood and Erosion Control Board, Mr. Edward Smeltz, the Appointments Committee sought a nominee with a background in statutory law who could also work with the member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board, or Mr. Bob Sensi, who is responsible for identifying sources of funding for the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Ms. Walsh expressed interest in both after reading the Appointments Committee's request to the RTM for identifying possible candidates, and she put herself forward. She herself is a member of the RTM. She has broad experience in law, including corporate, not-for-profit, employment financing compliance. She was the chief compliance officer for two global businesses. And in the public sector, as deputy general counsel in the City of New York, including where she included -- I'm sorry, where she negotiated the New York City Watershed Protection Agreement with federal, state, and local representatives. She has also expressed an interest in exploring ways to use the role on the Flood and Erosion Control Board to educate residents in passive ways of managing runoff which can lead to flooding. The Appointments Committee was pleased to nominate Ms. Walsh with 11-0-0. vote with District Three absent.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee interviewed Ms. Walsh at the same time as items ten and twelve, Mr. Finkbiner and Mr. Stan Kunis. And the only thing I would add to Mr. Eddy's report is that Ms. Walsh, as Mr. Eddy said, is a member of the RTM. She's a District Three member. She serves on the Legislative and Rules Committee, and she's currently serving on the ad hoc committee that was created to work on the proposed fracking regulation ordinance. So we know Ms. Walsh quite well. Our vote on Ms. Walsh was eleven zero zero. District eleven was absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item eleven. Item thirteen now comes before us. Once again, Mr. Eddy.
Be resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee of the RTM be appointed a regular member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, Joshua Brown.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee does not require a second. Mr. Eddy?
Just a little background, I think most people are aware that the reason we nominated Mr. Brown to serve, even though the term technically ends the end of this month, is that the new members will not be appointed probably until March, and the board is in need of having members until that period of time. The Appointments Committee nominated, originally met on September twenty-sixth to nominate a member of the RTM to succeed Joan Caldwell in serving on the Labor Contracts Committee. At that time, the committee chose Rob Pirelli Minetti from among a pool of four interested Despite the fact that the terms of the labor contract members, I'm sorry, I did this already. I'll give you a break there. Unbeknownst to the Appointments Committee at that time, Mike Wacheck had resigned also from the Labor Contracts Committee a month earlier on August twenty-ninth in order to take a position on the Town Retirement Board. Like the Board of Ethics, the Charter prohibits a member of the Retirement Board from serving on any other, in any capacity, on our town government. This situation came to light only after the nine-twenty-six meeting. We could have at that point, had we known, nominated two people, but we did not. So the nomination of Mr. Brown came afterwards from a pool of the remaining three people. The main issue that was discussed in the initial interview, again, was the importance of communication with the RTM on what is happening with the Labor Contracts Committee. Mr. Brown was nominated eleven, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown was nominated twelve zero zero to serve on the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Thank you. Am I having that wrong?
Labor contracts.
That too, yes. Labor contracts, so, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Warner with the Finance Committee report.
Just to clarify, even though it's the end of the year, those who are approved serve until replaced, so they could go on to, until March, as long as we need them. We had a little bit of a hiccup with this nomination. Mr. Brown had a conflict and couldn't be with us, and we had arranged a phone call that didn't work out, but fortunately, Mr. Brown has a history with us, and it's a good history. He has served on the Labor Contracts Committee before. He has acquitted himself well. I've been on the Labor Contracts Committee and worked with him, and I could speak on his behalf. Furthermore, he's also a successful chairman of the Finance Committee, and he has been before you, and we know him. And based on that information, your Finance Committee voted eight zero zero in favor of Josh Brown. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item thirteen. And the final item of this first group of combined items is item twenty-one, again, an Appointments Committee item.
Mr. Moderator, the, actually, I think Kip, you, I'm going to let Mr. Burgweger.
Well, you're going to present a substitute?
Thank you again, yes. For twenty-one, yes, for item twenty-one, I will be submitting a substitute. I need to read this resolution first.
Just explain the difference between what you're presenting and what was in the call.
Okay, so for this resolution, we have an organizational chart that currently exists in the RTM rules, in the appendix, that shows how the Town of Greenwich is organized. The current one is missing a number of boards, it's an old one, including the Flood and Erosion Control Board and the Condemnation Commission, both of which are nominated by the RTM. After meeting with the Legislative and Rules Committee, it was requested that the chart that was submitted be amended to include a key that showed which agencies were appointed by which bodies and lines that show the reporting authority. Additionally, there is a member, Ms. Krasner, from District Five, who requested that the Claims Committee and the Labor Contracts Committee be added onto this as well. So the substitute organizational chart include those changes.
All right, and that now is before us as item twenty-one. We'll take the reports on this item. Mr. Burgweger with the Legislative and Rules Report.
At our meeting on Monday, we were assisted by Mr. Eddy, and the organizational chart that we voted on does not contain the items that he just proposed, but we did discuss the line, adding the lines to the chart or the key, and Mr. Eddy said that he would do that. And so our vote on this matter was ten zero zero with District Seven and Nine absent.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Krasner?
I just want to make sure.
Why don't you come forward?
Through you, I want to make sure that the Labor Contracts Committee and the Claims Committee, which I had asked be part of this chart, be also part of the resolution, because I don't think it makes sense to have them on the chart without part of the resolution. Because the resolution states, whereas the Flood and Erosion Control Board and Condemnation Commission are agencies whose members are appointed by the RTM, my point in reviewing this carefully over the weekend was that the Claims Committee and the Labor Contracts are actually nominated by the Appointments Committee and, in fact, appointed by the RTM and weren't on this chart. So I wouldn't want them only to be on the chart without being included in the resolution.
Well, the chart is part of the resolution, so...
Well, the resolution just itemizes two. Are you happy with just having them included?
This is going to, if this is approved, this chart will become part of the RTM rules as an appendix, replacing the current organizational chart.
Okay, and you don't need them in the wording?
No, we don't.
Okay, just wanted to check on that, because it seems that they, I would have added them to the wording there, two more committees.
Mr. Eddy, were there any other boards that were included in this chart that weren't in the current one? If you know.
Yes, there were.
All right, so what I'm, I think there were others, and they're not included in the resolution? I mean, the only thing in the resolution is condemnation and flood and erosion. My question is, are there others?
Yes, there are.
So we're not taking care of those. What's important is the chart itself. All right. Further discussion on item twenty-one? All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items one through four, eight, eleven, thirteen, and twenty-one, and proceed to poll your delegation. I'll wait until I announce the vote to close the public hearing on that, just in case anything were to develop. All right. I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items ten and twelve, the Flood and Erosion Control appointments. Those in favor, one forty-three. Opposed, one abstaining, zero. Those items have carried. All right, while we are voting, we will continue with the next group of combined items. Those are items fourteen through twenty, and those are offered by our Appointments Committee again. Is that right, Mr. Eddy?
Yes.
All right, why don't you, why don't, and it's fair to say that the proposal will be to refer these to a committee consisting of you and Mr. Burgweger to put them in shape and bring them back for the...
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
All right, so why don't you offer all seven?
So, Mr. Moderator, I would like to move that...
Just place them before us first. Just describe, these are items fourteen to twenty. Just procedurally, we have to get them before us, and then we'll dispose of them.
Items fourteen through twenty are a continuation of the attempts, the initiative by the Appointments Committee to amend the term expiration dates for the appointed bodies. These particular boards are boards that are agencies that are, those that are found in the Charter. That's something you've seen already. I'll just leave it there, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. So items fourteen through twenty have been presented by our Appointments Committee, does not require a second. At this point, Mr. Eddy, I will recognize you to make a motion.
I would like to move that these items be referred to a committee consisting of the Chair of the Appointments Committee and the Vice Chair of the Labor Contracts Committee to be...
Legislative and Rules.
I'm sorry, Legislative and Rules Committee to be polished and brought back before the RTM in January.
All right, is there a second? Discussion on that motion. We can adopt things by unanimous consent. Is there any objection to that motion to refer items fourteen to twenty to this special committee? Hearing none, that may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. All right, that now brings us to the first of the separate items, item number five. Now comes before us. Abby Wadler, Assistant Town Attorney.
Good evening. Item number five, resolved that the RTM approves the lease between Greenwich Boat and Yacht Club, Inc., and the Town of Greenwich for the yacht club building on Grass Island in Greenwich and the adjoining boat docking facility in Greenwich Harbor with access and appendices thereto.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Beginning with Andy Chapin, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
The Parks and Rec Committee considered this. This is a lease with the Greenwich Boat and Yacht Club on Grass Island. Includes the area at the tip, the building at the tip, the slips along, the docks and slips along the west side of the point. I think there's sixty-seven of them. The Greenwich Boat and Yacht Club has had a good relationship with the town for many years and are active in town sailing programs. They maintain the building, the docks, and the seawall for the areas they use. All have been well-maintained. The committee voted in favor of the lease, however, questions were raised about whether or not the insurance coverage was required, was sufficient for the activities that were taking place there. We have expensive boats, and they're active activities, and were the amounts for those insurances reviewed annually. Since the lease provides the town the ability to change the amounts of coverage required, the committee did not see this as a problem with the lease and referred these questions to the risk management and legal departments. The committee voted eleven zero zero, District Nine absent.
Thank you. And our next report, Finance Committee, by its Chair, Mike Warner.
The Finance Committee took this up last Monday night, and we had with us Joe Cicillano from Parks and Rec. We voted in favor of this, eight zero zero, but we did discuss a few items that are worth your attention. This is a renewal of a lease, a ten-year lease with a ten-year option, and it's, one of the issues that came up previously that was raised in our meeting was some of the yacht clubs in town have provisions that allow newborn children to be put on the waiting list, so that there's not much opportunity for turnover. In this case, it's not, this is not the case here. This is where turnover is about every five years, and that was something the Finance Committee wrapped around a few years ago with another lease. This lease is not the case. It's certainly appropriate, and we voted eight zero zero in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Burgweger with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
We were assisted by Ms. Abby Wadler of the Law Department and Mr. Michael Curly, Commodore of the Boat Club. Ms. Wadler explained that, as Mr. Warner mentioned, this is a lease premises of the town, that is a term of ten years with an option for ten years. It's similar to the existing lease, except that the insurance provisions have been updated, and the dates have been updated, and there are no outstanding liabilities. Mr. Curly stated that the Boat Club will be eighty years old in two thousand and eighteen. The clubhouse was built by the Boat Club in the early nineteen-fifties, and the marina was dredged in nineteen seventy. In nineteen eighty-one, a new addition was constructed and new pilings were built. The marina was dredged again in two thousand and eight. After Superstorm Sandy, the Boat Club constructed an eight-thousand-ton seawall and a new pier. All this work was paid for by the Boat Club. In nineteen seventy, the Boat Club had sixty-seven slips. It has sixty-seven slips now. Again, the issue of waiting lists came up, and we were assured by the Commodore that no children were on that list. A member of the club who attended the meeting stated that she had been on the waiting list for eight or nine years and has a slip and has now had it for three years. Mr. Curly further explained that members of the club have funded work through the purchase of debentures, which entitles them to the use of a boat slip, and these are not transferable. We then had an extensive discussion regarding changes to the language of the lease to correct what we have termed scrivener's errors. The changes were described in an appendix, which has been distributed to all members. As our moderator would say, all members having received a copy of the changes, we propose waiving the reading of the changes, if that is acceptable. However, the one change that didn't get into the appendix that was distributed was the addition of the, was correction of, let me back up. There's a provision for giving notice to both parties, and the address for the town was incorrect, and that has been fixed. So at the appropriate time, we will move to amend the lease to incorporate these changes. The vote on legal order of the lease as amended by the changes was eleven zero one with District Three abstaining, because she had been absent for part of the discussion. The vote on the merits was twelve zero zero. Would you like me to propose the amendment?
I think you're the last report, yeah.
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, I move that we adopt the lease subject to the changes that were set forth in the appendix that was distributed to all members and the corrections to the notices, the addresses for notice to the town, or the address for notices to the town.
All right, so that is a motion offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee. It does not require a second. As we did previously, we can adopt a motion to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to amending this lease as provided for in the appendix that was distributed? Hearing none, absent objection. That motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion... Discussion on item five. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number five, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those are items one through four, eight, eleven, thirteen, and twenty-one. Those in favor, one fifty-one; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. Those combined items have carried. Item six now comes before us. Abby Wadler, once again, of the Law Department. Yes, we are closing the public hearing on the community development block grant items.
Thank you. Item six resolved that the RTM approves the lease between the Old Greenwich Yacht Club, Inc., and the town of Greenwich for a building known as the Dock Service Building at Greenwich Point.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item six has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Beginning with Andy Chapin, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Okay, this is a lease with the Old Greenwich Yacht Club. They occupy the building on the west side of Greenwich Point. They've also had a great relationship with the town for many years. This is a very similar lease to the other one that was just before you. The only difference is that they don't have the same amount of facilities they're responsible for. Essentially, they're responsible for the building, the deck, and the ground under it. There are no docks, no seawalls, no anything like that. The committee voted eleven zero zero. District nine absent.
Thank you. Mike Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee took this up Monday night. As was just explained, it's a fairly straightforward lease. It's a renewal, it's a ten-year renewal with a ten-year option. I would just add that we noted that this yacht club does conduct sailing programs on behalf, instead of having the town have to do it, they do it fundamentally for us, and other than that, the lease is fairly straightforward. We had not too much discussion. We had Joe Siciliano to answer any questions for us, and we voted eight zero zero in favor of approving this lease.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger with the Legislative and Rules Report.
The prior speakers described the same information that we received. We then again went through and identified scrivener's errors and sent out an appendix to all members of the RTM, and we moved to, we voted to approve the lease subject to those changes, plus correcting the, and the address for notice. Vote on legal order was twelve zero zero. The vote on the merits was twelve zero zero. And should I make the motion?
Yes.
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, I move that the lease be approved subject to the changes set forth in the appendix and the correction of the address for notices to the town.
All right. Any, that motion to amend is now before us. Any discussion on that? Any objection to amending as proposed by our Legislative and Rules Committee? That motion to amend may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Will the district chairs please mark, now, did I call for a vote on item five? I did, right? Okay. Well, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number six as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item seven now comes before us. Abby Wadler, once again.
Thank you. Item seven resolved that the RTM approves the lease between Greenwich Post 29, American Legion, Inc., and the town of Greenwich for the building known as the Old Glenville Community Center, 248 Glenville Road, Glenville.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. Andy Chapin, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee, will have that report.
The American Legion is a veterans' organization primarily made up of people from the Second World War and the Korean War. They're not opposed to other veterans, but that's the bulk of their membership. They're involved in many patriotic activities within town, such as the recent Pearl Harbor Remembrance and several other events during the year. They are leasing the building that is near the Western Greenwich Civic Center. So, it's a small building on a small area there. They are act, excuse me, they are responsible for maintaining the roof and the building itself, and the district, I mean, the committee voted eleven zero zero. District nine absent.
Thank you. Mike Warner with the Finance Committee report on item seven.
We took this up Monday night. We had with us Joe Siciliano. He explained that these leases are, this is a re-up for a ten-year lease with a ten-year extension. As was just explained, this, this American Legion post was, is active in town and does good work. We had, we had Irv Porter with us to explain the benefits of this lease, and as a result, we voted eight zero zero in favor. Thank you.
Mr. Warner, if you would not mind, I note this is the last item you're going to be reporting on tonight.
It will be.
And this will be your last meeting with us as Chair of the Finance Committee.
It will be.
Would you mind being a representative of all the fine incumbent members who are not returning tonight? Your dedication has served the town very well. I think you're representative of all those who have served us and are not returning. Too numerous to name, but if there's one that I would like to mention who will not be coming back, and that's Lloyd Hall. Appropriate that this is a veterans' item. Lloyd, a patriot of the finest order, a good friend to me, a right hand to me on the Claims Committee, Vice Chair. So, I'd ask if we could recognize all those fine members who are not coming back. Mike, thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
All right, Kip Bergweger with the Legislative and Rules Report.
We were assisted by Ms. Abby Wadler from the Law Department and Mr. Irv Porter on behalf of the Legion Post, and Mr. Peter LeBeau was, the Commander of the Post was also present at our meeting. As you heard, this is a lease for ten years with an option to renew, and it's similar to the existing lease. We first noted that there was language in the resolution, and the explenos that appears in the call contains an error. The name of the leased building is shown as the Old Greenwich Community Center, and we know Old Greenwich is a little bit away from this location. It's supposed to be known as the Old Glenville Community Center, and the explenos state that the lease will expire in 2017, when the date should be 2027. So, those corrections need to be made to the resolution and the explenos. We then had an extension discussion of the map, which appeared to be about 150 years old, which was attached as Exhibit A to show the location of the building, which wasn't shown on the map. So, it was agreed that a new exhibit would be prepared showing the current location of the building, and that would be substituted for the old map. And a copy of that photo has been distributed to all members of the RTM. So, the reference in the lease, there's a legal description that says this is the property shown on map number 504, which of course it no longer is. So, that legal description referenced to the old map needs to be revised to reflect, it's a reference to the photograph attached as Exhibit A. Mr. Porter explained that the Legion Post has about eighty members who are members of the American Legion, and it is a requirement for the American Legion who have served as a member of the Armed Forces in a combat zone. There are approximately fourteen hundred, 1,400 veterans in Greenwich, and eighty of them are members of this post. It's a charter organization for Boy Scout Troop 35 and for Girl Scout Troop 25. It also sponsors Boy States and Girl States. The building is used for meetings and contains kitchen facilities. The Legion Post 29 is a chartered veteran organization. We then followed a discussion of scrivener errors, and once again, we have sent the errors that were identified out to all members in the form of an appendix, and we will propose waiving the reading of those. Additionally, paragraph eight A three, which sets forth a requirement of fire insurance, was incorrectly included in this version of the lease because fire insurance was covered by a different provision. So, that has, will need to be deleted. And as we noted, well, at the appropriate time, we'll move to amend the lease to incorporate these changes. So, the vote on legal order of the lease as amended by the change in the resolution and explenos and the changes in the appendix was ten one one, with District Seven voting no, and District Two abstaining because there were some questions involving the terms of the lease that the town attorney would resolve following our meeting. The vote on the merits was twelve zero zero.
Thank you. You want to offer your motion?
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, I move that the lease be adopted subject to incorporating the changes shown in the appendix, correcting the, this reference to the map 504 in the legal description, and including the changes to the resolution, correcting the reference to the building.
All right, thank you. That motion to amend is now currently before us. Is there any objection to amending the lease in item seven as described by Mr. Bergweger? All right, that motion to amend may also be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number seven is amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the result of the vote on item five. This was the Greenwich Boat and Yacht Club lease. Those in favor, one fifty; opposed, one; abstaining, one. That item is carried. And the vote on item six, the lease with the Old Greenwich Yacht Club, those in favor, one fifty; opposed, two; abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have two remaining items. Item twenty-two now comes before us. Mr. Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank the members for their patience. This, this resolution contains fifteen different agencies, so it doesn't really make what I, matter what I say. It's going to be on here this time. Whereas a representative town meeting has amended the municipal code to establish unique position designations for members and alternate members of the town agencies appointed by the RTM, and whereas it is established by action of the representative town meeting that the positions on these town agencies have been assigned unique designations, be it resolved that these unique position designations be assigned to the current members of the town agencies appointed by the RTM according to the schedule below. There's a little bit more to read here, but rather than going through it all, I know that it's going to be postponed until next month at the request of the Legislative and Rules Committee, Mr. Moderator, so perhaps we'll just let-
Oh. All right, hang on. I think I skipped something, but we'll come back to that. Thank you. All right, so we're going to get another report here?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Bergweger with the report of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Again, we considered items fourteen through twenty and twenty-two at our Monday meeting, and in the course of reviewing items fourteen through twenty, we concluded that they needed further work and should be postponed, and so, as a matter of course, we also postponed or voted to postpone item twenty-two. So, we did not take it up, and I would move on behalf of Legislative and Rules Committee that it be referred to the two-man subcommittee for completion along with the other items.
All right, so this is a motion to refer?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to this motion to refer?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of referring item twenty-two to the same special committee that we referred items fourteen through twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion to refer has carried. Thank you. All right, item nine is something we need to dispose of tonight. This is an appointment. May we have the resolution? Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31st, 2021. James B. Doherty.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item nine has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? John Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
The Appointments Committee voted to postpone this until the, the, I'm sorry, I apologize, the April or May meeting of the RTM.
April.
Yeah, April. Thank you.
All right. Motion to postpone item nine to our April meeting is now before us. All those in favor of postponing item nine to our April meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. All right, and the last item to come before us tonight, Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, resolved that it is the sense of this meeting that candidates for moderator and moderator pro tem of the 2018-2019 RTM file their names with a brief statement of their qualifications with the town clerk on or before noon of December 22nd, 2017 for inclusion in the call of the January 2018 meeting.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item twenty-three has been moved and seconded. Mr. Bergweger with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
During our discussion on Monday evening of this matter, it was noted that this is a sense of the meeting resolution, and in that, and in that sense, it is not enforceable per se. So, nominations may be made from the floor, even if people haven't, those nominees haven't submitted a description of their qualifications. There was a discussion in our committee as to whether this should, no, this should be a requirement, or whether people can just make nominations. And the argument by one delegate was that the filing should be voluntary. The response was that argument, the response argument was that members of the RTM should want to know the qualifications of candidates for such important offices. So, there was a motion made to revise the resolution to provide that candidates should be encouraged to file, and the vote on that was five, six, zero, but districts three, six, eight, nine, eleven, and twelve voting no. Then, the vote on the merits in the form that is presented was twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Discussion on item twenty-three. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item twenty-three, and proceed to poll your delegation? We will need to await the resolution of that vote before we can proceed to adjourn, this being the final item to come before us. I have the result of the vote on the American Legion lease, which is item seven. Those in favor, one fifty-one; opposed, one; abstaining, zero. That item has carried.